I missed it last week because no one asked me.
I can't afford to pay for it.
I'm really happy to pay for it. I support that position.
Okay. I'd like to call the Cook County Board of Commissioner regular meeting to order. Let's rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Election of 2018 Cook County Board Chair. Anybody want to say anything? Or Jeff wants to. Yes. Did you want to say something, Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, after our conversation, after the committee, the whole, last week. I did a little bit of research and I talked to a few of you individually. And there are a few counties who have a rotation set up to select their board chair and vice chair. There are reasons why that's difficult. There are lots of exceptions to a schedule such as that. So I thought it might be simpler just to continue the way we have and set our board chair and vice chair by motion. But that we might facilitate that conversation by having people indicate, polling the group and having people indicate whether they're interested in serving. So we could streamline the process this morning.
Okay. Those interested in being the chair?
Well, the question that Jeff had sent out was to let him know if he would be interested.
Okay, got it. So prior, so it's all set up.
Prior I did indicate that I would be interested. Excellent.
I would just like us to ask who's interested so I know before we vote. I know we answered Jeff, but I would like it on record.
I'm not interested.
Such an affirmative.
Not interested.
Not interested.
Not interested.
There you go.
Process of elimination.
Well, I'll nominate Jenny Starley. You'll be chair 2018.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Congratulations. I'm switching places with you. Get my copy going over here. I'll do my drawer later.
That was fast.
I know. You know, we were so prepared this year. Great. Congratulations.
Okay. So then we need to look at a vice chair. Does it kind of follow that the chair and then person then becomes the vice chair? I mean, how does that work or just nominate somebody who would like to do that?
I like your chair personally. But we'll do, we'll be okay. Your chair is kind of tall for me.
I know.
We'll trade in a minute.
I'd like to know who's interested.
Very good.
Well, I had indicated to Mr. Cadwell that if only, only, only if no one else is interested, I'd be willing to do it.
I nominate.
Are you interested, Bobby?
No interest here.
I would nominate.
Are you interested?
I had said I am not interested, but I thought that Myron was all in. As always, I believe Jan, not to speak for you, Jan and I are available to either one of you for questions since we've done it. If you're nervous about it because it's two new people, but honestly, I would like to see two new people in this chair. If you're willing, I just thought you were all ready to go. I don't want you to feel forced.
Well, I think that, you know, I just emphasized only, and that means albeit. If someone else wants to do it, they certainly can. And then let the group decide.
So I would nominate Myron Bershine as the vice chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Great. Welcome aboard, Myron.
Here, Myron. You can actually move your chair over if you want.
Do you want to adjust it?
Yeah, I just got this adjusted.
Physically, they're not sized for us.
Try your chair because...
You try my chair.
We take our chairs literally. We do.
I don't lose to adjustments.
Fortunately do.
Okay, take us official.
Very good.
Name tags on.
All right.
Okay. Now, we have that all covered. Is your chair good for you physically?
I moved my chair. I have to adjust it every day. I don't know what happens with it. And then it sinks. It's not that I get lowered during the meeting. I just, the chair is sinking.
He likes to sink.
Yeah, Bobby knows it so well.
Booting yourself up. Okay.
We need some new chair.
We got that figured out. All righty. So we'll move on to the additions of adjustments to the meeting agenda. Anything there from anybody? Okay. And then we will open it for public comment. Looks like no one is here. We have an absentee. Thank you, Mike.
Mike Carlson in Croftville.
Yes. Thank you, Mike. Okay, so then we'll move into discussing the 2018 travel and mileage reimbursement, which has been set by the IRS a little bit higher this year. Any comments or questions about that? Appointment of citizens to various boards, committees, and commissions. That was something, do we discuss that or do we appoint or was there vacancy or how do we look at that?
Madam Chair, if I can, Brady, do we need a motion to adopt the IRS reimbursement rates for the year?
I don't, I'm not aware if we do. We always have.
Okay, so I think we ought to back up, Madam Chair, and ask for a motion to adopt the IRS.
Okay, so I'll need a motion to adopt the IRS travel and mileage reimbursements.
So moved. One second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So that is official now. Okay. The appointments, that would be...
And then, Madam Chair, related to appointments of citizens to various county boards, we have some boards that have some vacancies. But I don't know that we received anything specifically from, I know the airport commission was looking for, to make some appointments. I also know that the community center board is looking to make some appointments. We didn't have that information ahead of this meeting, so we'll just have to take their recommendations from those committees.
There's some incorrect information under airport on this list, and we will be making our decision this month, I believe.
Yep, so I would just, that's informational at this point, and we'll be updating those as those boards meet. And they'll make their recommendations of who their submission should be. So I know the highway advisory potentially has some changes. And I know the airport commission will have a new list for us, and we'll present those as we have them.
Okay. We will address that in the future then. So moving on to the appointment of county commissions to boards, committees, so forth. Everybody a chance to look over your board and commissions of last year?
Madam Chair, I just would like to make one correction that I have dropped from the ARC. And Bobby Duchesne will be the sole representative that rotates every year where there'll be two reps. So that's the way it was this past year. And Commissioner DuKirk was on it, and then Bobby came on. So I'll be off of that.
Okay. I'm not alternate.
Well, I guess I could be.
You can do it too. Madam Chair, I think, being that we have a new chair and vice chair, and your responsibilities are changed, that we should probably go through each one of these.
That was going to, yeah. Because that's what I did. Made some corrections in addition, so...
I'm sorry I was out of order.
That's okay. You could change it.
Last year, we just figured it out.
Okay, so we'll just start on the first page with active living, steering committee.
I'll remain as primary.
Remain there.
I'm fine with alternate.
Okay, we do not have an agricultural inspector right now. Airport advisory, so that's the one that could change.
Yeah, Kim Shepherd finished her term, and Jay Simons never actually was able to complete his responsibility. So Mindette Frederickson is actually in place of Jay Simons. And then we'll be replacing Kim.
Okay. So we'll get an update on that when you meet.
Yep.
Okay. Aquatic invasive species, I'm an alternate, but who's the main one?
Have you been going as the primary?
Not much. I haven't gone to.
I'd be willing to take that on since I have the largest land and water mass in my district. If you could, I'll just have to find out the time and dates for it.
Yeah, okay, good. I'll be the alternate then.
Thank you.
Art approval committee for the courthouse.
I'd stay on it.
I'd stay on it. We've done a great job so far.
Yes, fabulous.
No meetings.
Not a lot of changes in art, but we'll work harder.
Yeah, but it really has helped to liven up our hallways here with many different displays. I don't know about Arrowhead Coalition for Multiple Use.
It used to be a freak, yeah.
Madam Chair, excuse me.
Yep, go ahead.
At one meeting this year, I had volunteered, made an announcement to serve on that because there was some issues with the Forest Service. So I did meet with that group, with the Forest Service and their executive board, and we worked out some issues. And I sort of, as a county representative, wanted to be there to get something done. So I'd be willing to continue with that. I was on that when it formed many years ago, so... And I think that was announced in a public meeting. I didn't dream that, did I focus?
No.
Appreciate it. You might have.
And I'd be willing to be Myron's alternate.
Okay, great. Very good. Arrowhead County Association, I've been going to that, and Myron has been alternate. Or once in a while, when he's available, he has joined us down there. That's the seven countywide get together, and that's really good to represent our county. Arrowhead Economic Opportunity, Myron?
Yep, I'll continue with that.
Okay, and I'll be alternate. Arrowhead Health Alliance?
I'm fine with three meaning as a person on that.
I'll be the alternate.
Great, okay. Arrowhead Library System?
Well, no, I had no idea. I was the ex-official member of the Arrowhead Library System. I knew I was on the board at the Gramary Library, but I did not know.
So you haven't gotten any contact from them?
Uh-uh.
Jeff, can we have Julie look into if they're still meeting?
Oh, they still meet. It's a very active group. I just didn't know I was on it.
Okay, it's a three-year term.
Maybe I'm up.
No, you're eligible for two terms.
Well, I'm on the library board, so I'd be fine with you.
So you'd be, yeah, that makes sense.
It's actually the same thing.
Oh, it is the same thing. Well, then I have honored my role there.
I believe it's the same thing. I think it's just the terminology is confusing.
Okay.
Very good.
As with anything government.
Because there is an Arrowhead Library System Board, but great, it's the same thing. I'm good with that.
Arrowhead Regional Correction Board?
It's up to you. If you want to be alternate, I can take it. Bobby's been pretty good about making all the meetings.
It doesn't matter to me. If you want to, fine. If you don't, I'll do it.
Myron can still as alternate. See how that works? If you don't make a choice, I can stick it to you.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. That's why I say it. I wouldn't say it otherwise.
Okay, ARDC, which I've been on for several years. I'll continue with that. Now, the ARDC Regional Transportation. I actually gave that over to Bobby, so you're still good with that?
Yep.
Good. Okay. Arrowhead Transit?
I've been with that and I'll continue. It's been difficult to meet all the meetings because sometimes I double up on that one every once in a while, but you know, I'm sure that's true of everyone, so... But I'm willing to continue. I've enjoyed that, yeah.
And Jan for alternate? Have you done any of it?
Would somebody else prefer that? I mean, I'm fine with it, but if somebody else would like it, I'd be happy to.
I can take it, Jan.
Okay, I'm gonna take that.
Okay, assessor and a commissioner. So who's, the commissioner is listed as Lisa.
Land Commissioner.
Yeah, Land Commissioner. So is that enough? Is that all they need?
Yep.
Okay. Association, and that's all of us, Policy Committee for Transportation at AMC. So have you been attending any of those, Commissioner Duchesne? The AMC Policy Committee on Transportation.
I think, yeah.
Did you, yeah. But you did go when we had AMC.
So Jenny, are you on safety then?
Am I what?
On safety. There's five.
I've been going to public safety.
Okay.
Okay.
So Bobby's taking your place.
So those should be switched. So it should be Bobby under transportation and you under safety.
Oh, because it says bacon, so...
So what happened in January of last year, Commissioner Duchesne, is that everything that was Commissioner Mose, we divided up among all of us. So now we have a chance to kind of equal out or divide things out because Myron took a lot. And so as we go along here, if you see an area that you think you could do or would be interested in, you know, I'll ask you or you can come forward. Like the next one, AMC Indian Affairs Task Force.
I am on there.
You are?
I've been going to that too.
I replace Heidi on that.
Okay.
And if I would like to serve in that too.
Just so you all know, every one of us can go to the Indian Affairs Task Force. We can only have one voting member, so I've been the voting member. Did Rochelle, before she leave, get that changed to make you a voting member? Okay, let's get that straight. But under AMC, Julie can just put us all down. I will be attending all of the meetings as usual, but I'll make sure you get the voting right.
So we could just list all of us under that?
Yep.
Yeah, and then Myron, you'd still be able to go to that and keep up with what's going on?
I would like to, yes, because I have been involved in. They're in sort of a reorganization. Bobby Duchesne and I attended a meeting, and I think some of the new alignment in AMC has been made with that. And they're looking at broadening that to welcome more people from the tribal groups to be involved. So I have a real interest in that. I'd like to continue.
Madam Chair, if we could just go back up to the policy committees? I forgot to let you all know, but I am the vice chair of the general committee.
Yay.
Probably the first female in that position in the history of that group.
Okay, ties are changing. Thank goodness. Okay. And then AMC Advisory Committee. I had gone to the broadband, but since we're done in our county, I really didn't feel that was important for me to go to. But that's still something we can all go to. So we'll just put all, so Julie can write that up for all. Futures, Heidi is still there?
Still on it.
Okay. Board of Adjustment. Will there be any changes there? Let's see. I guess Dave would be next year.
Well, it looks like they all, they all ended, or they started January 1.
Mm-hmm.
So they're three-year terms. We skipped ATV.
ATV planning?
That's you as the primary.
And I've really not been to any, but suppose when they have one, I'd be interested.
Is that a committee that we need to continue? That was a committee that served a purpose. And that purpose is genuinely covered by...
Multiple use?
No, it's really covered by the Parks and Trails Department and their advisory committee now, so I think we could probably...
Take it off.
Skip that one. Mark it off. Okay. Board of Equal...
Excuse me, but I know that I've been getting some notices on, and maybe this is elsewhere, but just want to comment on it now that the US Forest Service, DNR, and county, they do have quarterly meetings.
But those are all being coordinated through the Land Commissioner's office and through the Parks and Trails Commission, so...
Okay, so that's going to be elsewhere or... They're going to have quarterly meetings and... So I've been getting notices for those. Okay, so that is listed somewhere?
It will be later on.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see, Board of Education, equalization, we're all involved in that. BWCA County Land Exchange Task Force, Heidi and Myron?
Again, I don't know, this group had its purpose, and at this point, this process is in the hand of...
Forest Service.
Of Forest Service General Counsel. I don't know that we need to list this group.
So if we take it off, will they finally close?
I think, I'm suggesting that might be a good idea.
I was serious, Brady. That wasn't funny.
I had a conversation with Attorney Hicken last week about this. And I had a conversation with Representative Nolan's aide last week about this. And this is just waiting for somebody to open up the file and say, yes, all the paperwork is here. Schedule it for closing. That could take two days or 20 years, but I believe it's, I believe it's been dusted off again, so I think it should be looked at. But having a committee about it, and I'm trying to be sensitive to the fact that we want to reduce this list to the point that it is practical.
I'm good with that.
So we'll take it off?
Yeah.
Okay, Budget Committee.
Madam Chair, we have the, we have three standing committees. Budget Committee, Personnel Committee, and Public Safety and Transportation. And typically, the Budget Committee has, or the Personnel Committee has been the chair and the vice chair. That doesn't necessarily have to be, but we should, when we think about this committee, we should think about those three committees in general. And this isn't representative because last year, this was Commissioner Bershine and Commissioner Starley. So this is also the one where we talked about the possibility of, and we'll have this conversation later in the meeting, adding citizen representatives to this committee, so...
Should we put this one on hold?
We can talk about who the two commissioner representatives are.
Who doesn't want to do it?
Well, elimination again. Well, the question in my mind is if the chair and the vice chair are going to do one of the standing committees, which one is the most important for them to do? Is it personnel, is it budget, or is it public safety, transportation?
Budget, well, budget, I think. I don't know about Myron, but I feel we've accomplished so much, and I'd like to keep on for one more year to finalize and keep everything the way we had projected with our levy and getting it down. I think one more season of doing that would make sense.
Yeah, I think that's logical, Madam Chair. I, you know, we made some, you know, significant progress in looking at, you know, financial plan and looking at the future, so I think that would be maybe a good thing. Not that we know anymore than anyone else. We've just spent a year getting some background information.
When does the Personnel Meeting or Committee meet?
Personnel Committee meeting typically meets the second Tuesday from 1:00 to 3:00.
Second Tuesday. And safety?
Safety has been the second Wednesday in the morning from 8:00 to 9:30. And the Budget Committee had been the fourth Tuesday from 1:00 to 3:00. Now, of course, all of those could change based on the juggling of people's schedules and what are their conflicting messages they have. But it would be nice in January to establish the schedule going forward.
I believe the Emergency Management, which is chair and vice chair, is the fourth Tuesday at 2:00. So you would have to change the Budget Committee.
Yeah.
But I, like Myron and Jenny, if we're going to add citizens, because they've spent the last year on it, so when the citizens come in, you have all the background information. So thank you for offering to do that.
So we would need to change and think about the budget.
We can look at the schedule.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, but you know, another option is to just take one of us off of that and get someone, another commissioner on the Budget Committee. That's another option. So when I said I'd be willing to do it, and that's logical, but I would be willing to step off if someone really wants to get into it. But I'll continue if no one else wants to.
You're so generous and willing. Appreciate it all. Everybody is. But are we settled with that? You're okay with it?
Everyone else is.
Cemetery Association.
Every year we talk about this, and every year we think they haven't met.
Well, I don't think Herb's been there.
Madam Chair, I've had some history with this in the past. When I was a moderator of a church, board chair of the church. And that's, you know, I think we should just, either we have to assume this, but there's just a long history and there's some land title issues with that cemetery. And so until that's resolved, you know, they've been sort of doing it on their own, a certain group of people. And, you know, since, this is especially the one, I think, that's up on the Gunland Trail at Maple Hill. But I, I don't know if we should be involved in cemetery business. That's more associated with churches usually.
I say remove it, and if they need a commissioner, they can approach us.
I'll take a look at it, but typically, a local unit of government has some responsibility with these. Brady, do you have any?
There may be a file that I threw something in from long ago. I'll take a look.
We need to check, but I am just, it's, it's something that you see at organizational meetings across the state on this Tuesday because typically, either the city or the county has had some responsibility related to the oversight of that land. So we'll take a look at it.
But we own one.
We do.
In Hobland, yeah.
And that commissioner spot was Jan Hall, then it went to Frank, and it's probably because it's in Hobland. Should go to Bobby. Sure, thanks, Bobby.
Okay. Children's Justice Initiative?
I'm fine. They have not met since I've been a commissioner.
Okay, we'll keep you on board there. Cook County Highway Advisory Committee, which I had turned over to Bobby.
And we'll be meeting on Thursday, so we'll update the membership as part of our agenda for that day.
Okay. Cook County Wetland Management Plan?
Still...
Well, we've met once or twice. It's been a hard one for me to get to because it's a double up. Once in a while, I've been able to, but...
When do they meet?
Varies.
Do you want to be the alternate and I'll take the primary?
Okay, good.
Thank you, Heidi.
Yep.
Communications, Armor Tower and 911 Committee?
I think I'm on that one.
Okay.
Is that the, just to be clear, there are a couple of these, and one is... One is meets with all the counties, and the other just meets right here with just Cook County's 911 service. So I've been on the 911, but I was going to recommend you take that position because you are also on the Regional Radio Board. So that makes sense to me, if that works for you, Bobby?
Mm-hmm. And I can remain alternate.
Yep.
Community Center Board of Trustees?
I'm sure that Diane will be providing an updated list.
Yeah, right now, you're the alternate, Myron?
Yes, and Jan, I believe, is...
In the primary.
She's not on there, so...
But you're not on the list, but we'll put you on.
Yeah, I put myself on.
Okay, good.
Because I've been going.
Okay, good. Cleveland Cliffs Annual Meeting, that's all of us. I've been attending a couple of them. Usually, they'll have them anywhere between January and March over in Virginia.
Do we, Madam Chair, do we need to have that on this list, or is that something we just note in our agendas? just note in our agendas as meetings to note, and note that everybody's
We can do that, sure.
I, I don't know that it needs to be on our assigned list.
Right, no. Community Health Board. Okay, Jan, you must be
Are you going to that part of it? Mm-hmm. I mean, that would be one I would love to let go of, it's kind of a big one, but I'm happy to keep it to if
It's in Duluth.
People are booked. It's, it's either in Duluth, I rarely attend in Duluth, but, but it also meets upstairs in the Public Health Human Services Conference Room, video, via video.
I don't have that set up to be video every meeting.
It, it is set up to be video every meeting, but I just find that any meeting that's set up to be video every meeting, you need to check in face to face once in a while. Just, um, video doesn't do it for me completely.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, just, just an FYI, I, I think one reason we had so many committees listed here, or, I don't know if it's the reason why, but we use the list, it's in the policy for per diems. If it's on the list, then it's done. It's already assigned. Otherwise, um, that's, one of the agenda items has always been that you have to ask for the Board to agree to any other committee, so just keep that in mind. It's like, it's automatic if it's on here, otherwise, you've got to make specific mention. At least, that's been the past practice.
Right. Or if anything new would pop up, that would be important to discuss. Okay, so are you still
I'm still willing.
And it's not at ten thirty, it's at twelve thirty.
It's at twelve thirty.
Well, I was just going to say, I've got the third Monday every other month, depending, I've got a meeting at noon in Duluth, but if it's noon, then I can't, because I can do that.
Yeah, it's twelve thirty.
No, I'm sorry, because mine is at twelve o'clock.
If you can do it ITV here, and it's every other month, Jan, I can take it.
You want to take it?
I can take it.
Great, okay. And I can be the alternate on that.
That's great.
Okay. Comprehensive Trail Plan Steering Committee.
Madam Chair, this, the Steering Committee has been
Right.
has served its purpose and become the Planning Commission, so
Yeah, so we can remove that. Cook County Community Wildfire Protection Plan, the last Thursday of the month at seven PM. So it looks like Myron and I then would move into that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And that meets regularly?
It says the last Thursday of the month at seven.
Where does that meet?
I don't know. I don't know, I've never been to one.
Maybe at the ranger station?
So what's
We'll find out.
Have they been meeting, or?
If they have, they have told us.
We'll have to ask Valerie to update.
So we, this will be Myron and Jenny then?
We'll get an update on that. Okay, County Healthcare Planning Committee. I've always, usually been able to make the first Friday, so You're willing to be the alternate? Yes. Okay, good. Historical Society?
Yes, I'll continue with that, I, I think we're, we're doing quite well.
And Jan for our alternate?
It's fine.
Cook County Local Energy Project.
Bobby's the primary.
And Jan, the alternate?
Sure.
And I'm on the invasive team. I'll continue with that, if you'll continue to be
Yep.
Cook County Soil and Water Conservation District.
Jan is my alternate.
Okay.
Yeah, she's covered for me.
And we still will have the Coroner as Dr. Stover?
Yeah, we just updated on a three-year contract since I've been here, so I need to update this, this appointment notation, but yeah, we shouldn't have to take any action.
Okay. Council on Aging.
Yes, I've been going to that, and it's the first Tuesday of the month, and couldn't go today, but I think I've only missed one other, but I, I, I would be willing to continue.
Okay, I can be the alternate then. County DNR Service, Forest Service
I'm sorry, that's the one I was talking about.
Madam Chair, this is, this is
Council on Aging.
The Commissioner's earlier question, so this, this quarterly DNR Forest Service coordination, according to Brady's comment, and according to the fact that we are actively participating, we'd leave this one on the list as it is.
Yes, yes, that's the one I was referring to
Okay.
Previously.
Okay, Deferred Compensation Plan Committee.
That only come, if there's an issue, once, once you have to rewrite the plan, or there's a lot of change usually that causes it.
So it's a potential
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
DNR Land Management, we have a vacant primary, and you've been the alternate. I haven't gone to any meeting, I, okay.
And Madam Chair, I'm, I'm wondering if, if that wouldn't be something that was absorbed by our Land Commissioner as well?
Mm-hmm.
So at this point, I would, I would cross that off until we find out that we have a responsibility there.
Mm-hmm, great. Economic Development EDA Council, we have Heidi and Myron.
We need to add Carol Mork to the list, she's not on there.
We should add her, right?
Yep.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Okay. Emergency Information Team, well
I'll take the alternate.
It's not the Board Chair and the Vice Chair?
It's the Board Chair and the Vice Chair, and then an alternate.
Oh, and an alternate.
So Myron can't be alternate and Vice Chair.
Oh, good.
Wait a minute, no.
Plus, the Board Chair, the Vice Chair, plus an alternate.
Not plus, it's if one of you two can't make it, because we can't have three at a meeting without noticing it.
Right, well, but it's
So the membership on the Emergency, Emergency Information Team is the Chair and the Vice Chair?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But the Vice Chair is an alternate?
No.
No.
The Chair and the Vice Chair must go. If one of you two can't go, I'll take the alternate spot.
It is written as an alternate, but it's not true.
So we have to go in
You have to go, you must.
Is this a meeting that you've gone to before?
Yep. Oh, yeah, every month.
Every month.
So when does this one meet?
Fourth Tuesday, two o'clock.
Wow. Can't have long meetings.
So will they be able to contact us now?
Yep.
Okay.
Wow, this can be interesting.
Madam Chair, what I'll do is I'll give my notes to Julie, I'll have her summarize them, I'll have them run them past all of you, and then update and contact the contacts for each of these groups.
Mm-hmm, okay.
We'll try to get
And this one, Valerie sends out the information
Valerie sends the notices, so we just have to
She knows.
Okay.
Hi, Valerie.
We probably will have to work through some conflicts and work things out.
Yeah, with the Chair, Vice Chair.
Right, okay.
Looks pretty good so far.
Emergency Preparedness Committee, so Myron, you've been alternate on that. So this meets the third Tuesday.
Thought this was the one we were talking about, sorry.
Good point. I think this Information Team was like that annual event, maybe.
Okay.
Yeah, I think
I thought we were on Preparedness.
No, we're on Information.
That's why I think the other one is, is
That's just as she calls it.
Yeah.
And this one is the third Tuesday at two thirty.
Yeah, okay. I think it's actually at two.
Well, so you're going to do that one, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, I was confused.
I skipped one. I skipped one, because I don't think we ever met.
Okay, Emergency Operations, well, is that the one that's, once, whenever she calls it?
That's when something happens.
When something happens, yeah. Or training.
Correct.
Okay. Extension Committee, Myron and Jan.
Fine with that, that, that's one of those rare ones, what two Commissioners are on it, okay.
Yeah, there, is that, is that necessary for two Commissioners to be on?
Oh, good point.
I'll have Diane update, I'm not sure what their bylaws call for.
It's, it might be in statute, that one is
Okay, I would assume so, okay.
I think I'll, I have it in a file.
We'll leave your names until we know further.
Well, then, we should have an alternate, if that's the case.
Yeah.
We'll find out what the, what the organizational document recommends.
Okay. Fire Relief Appointee Statute. It's blank for names, so is it something important, I don't know? As needed, as asked to do something by the Board?
I can ring that back if you like, and it is in statute for the, you know, for the unorganized.
For the unorganized?
Yeah.
Okay. Brady, we'll check into that. Firewise Community Committee, Heidi and Jan.
I'll stay on that.
Okay. Okay.
Find the alternate.
Fire Department Relief Funds. So we have some names here, but then we have blanks. Colville's blank, that's the only one.
It looks like we're missing
Those two may be related, so I'll check on that.
Okay.
The Fire Relief Appointee and the Fire Relief Funds.
Right.
It may be duplicative.
Okay, Forest Service County Road Committee, um, hmm. I don't know, I have not been to anything.
I mean
So
Is there any reason that couldn't be done by the Highway Advisory Committee?
Makes sense.
If there's, if there's any responsibility there, is there no reason we couldn't do that with an existing standing?
Right.
Good idea.
Because the engineer is on there too. Okay, so move it to Transportation.
Transportation, Safety.
We would just, we would just check, move it to the Highway Advisory.
Highway Advisory.
Yeah. Okay. Forest Service County Liaison Meeting, emergencies only, well, that's good. We're on there for a primary. Will attend as needed. Getagami Trail, I've been going to those, Heidi is the backup. Mm-hmm. Grand Mary Library Board, Jan.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Grand Portage Community Task Force.
I've been going to some meetings up there, and I find it worthwhile, so I would be willing to continue. That has had different forms, but it's basically, you know, they get, have meetings and they
Yeah, they all have different names.
Yeah.
And you can basically go to?
Yeah.
I try to go to them, and I, if, you know, Bobby's okay with that, but I think it's good to have another Commissioner there.
So we have you as the primary, and Bobby would be the alternate?
Well, I don't even know if it'd be alternate, just be both of us on there.
Just put us both on there.
Yeah. Plus, then the Grand Portage State Park Committee.
I've followed up on that one, and they haven't met, but at some point, they may, but I haven't seen that happening.
I'd say that one's done.
I think so too, yeah, I don't know, okay.
Take that off then?
Yeah.
Okay. Grand Portage Undoing Racism Initiative, so we're all invited to that.
Yeah, and, and I think at some point, you know, that's been, worked, the school has developed on something like that, but I know that, um, you know, I worked with this many years ago, and if it gets reactivated, there was an initiative with that, and if it gets reactivated, again, you know, one of the tribal council members in Grand Portage would initiate that, and I'd be willing to serve.
Mm-hmm.
And there might be a meeting this summer, spring, that we'd be involved in planning, so if I could stay on there, but it's not going to meet a lot.
Okay.
If everyone's okay with that.
Mm-hmm. Fine. Gunflint Trail Scenic Byway Committee.
Yep.
Have you met?
Yep.
Do you need an alternate?
If someone wants to be my alternate, it needs mid-trail.
Is that every week, or every month, or not every week?
During the non-winter seasons.
Three months.
I think we meet six times a year.
Non-winter, non-winter seasons.
Non.
Okay, November, yeah. Okay, you're okay with the being primary?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
They kind of work around me, they're very wonderful people.
All righty. How to the Continent Partnership?
I would like to stay on that, I think their stuff is going into my junk mail, so I got to check in with Valerie and find out when we're going again.
Okay, and you'll be the backup?
It's fine.
Okay. Highway Engineer, right now, we're working with Lake County Hospital District. Myron and Heidi as ex-officials.
Madam Chair, what is that? Does anyone know?
It's the Hospital Board.
It is the Board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I go every month.
Good, okay, I just wanted to make sure
I think you covered for me once.
I didn't.
Okay, so you're still
Yeah, I'm fine. I'm sorry, but I, I, I had assumed it was, but it's just District is
Mm-hmm, yeah, we could change it to Board.
I think Hospital Board would be better.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what they call it, it's very
The District is actually the taxing authority, that's, I think that's why it's listed the way it is.
Hospital Tax District Board, okay.
Human Service Board. So, well, that could change, or no, Jerry was
Bobby's on that.
Really?
Oh, vacant for Bobby, yeah.
By, by definition, that's this Board and Jerry and Carla, who have already been reappointed for 2018, so
Labor Negotiations, well, I've been an alternate, but I haven't been involved in anything, but now I guess I will be. Board and Vice Chair, would never need me.
Yeah, and, and Madam Chair, what I, what I would suggest is that we're just finishing up with last year's, that we keep our group consistent until we finish the negotiations, and then the Chair and the Vice Chair be called in if there are anything that else that needs to be, if there, if there's any that start during the year, they would start with the Board Chair and Vice Chair.
Okay. Very good. Lake Superior Popular Water District, I've been on that, I will continue, although we pretty much have things wrapped up for Popular River, but you never know. Land Policy Advisory Group. So Myron, you've been involved in that?
I haven't met.
Okay, do you want to continue on there, Case?
I just guess so, I, I don't know.
Brady, is that a group that needs to continue, or is that work being done within another meeting?
I think it's on some ad, needs, ad-needed basis.
Let me check with Jan.
As needed?
It could very well be.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall when, when it last met, it's been a while.
I think the vacant spot was Frank Mo, so it probably hasn't met in a year.
So leave it on as just as needed?
I, I'm assuming that we'll be able to delete it, but I want to confirm that they can do that within the Land Commissioner, Parks and Trails.
Yeah. Okay, Land Records Committee, Chair and Vice Chair, did you recall meeting with anything? No? Land Records Committee.
I'll have to investigate.
Check on that.
Yeah, that one's a little different, that's, yeah, that's the affected departments that all take part in land records, whether it's recorder, auditor, assessor, and it's just for efficiencies.
Okay. Laurentian Resource Conservation Commission?
I've been going to those, and
Good, okay. We'll keep that as is.
Sure, yeah.
Local Water Management Advisory Committee. Well
I, I'm sorry, but it hasn't been the fourth Monday of the month, it's been the third, I, I'm sorry, but it hasn't been the fourth Monday of the month, it's been the third, I believe, but that's here nor there.
For Laurentian?
For Laurentian?
Yeah, it's changed, so.
Oh, okay. Third.
Third or fourth.
So, this one, the water management is the third Monday of the month.
Mm-hmm.
I've not been involved in anything, have you?
Ginny, that's the Cook County Coalition for Lakes and.
Well, I go, yeah, I know I go once in a while, but I'm not a steady attendee.
And I don't think they meet this time of the year.
Right. Probably not till May. Okay, we'll continue with that. Minnesota County Information Systems.
Yeah, you can take Dusty off.
Take Dusty off?
I think Rena's still.
Do we, if it's not a.
It's not a county board.
If it's not a county board meeting, do we need to have it on the list?
I don't think so.
Okay. Minnesota County Intergovernmental Trust.
I'm sorry, but I haven't been going and I haven't been getting notices. So, I guess I'd need to follow up on that, but I guess I'll have to be there, but I'll have to be honest.
Okay. You get notification.
No news has sort of been good news on my schedule.
Okay.
So.
But it is a viable organization that you get medium notices?
Well, I believe this is the Minnesota Trust that has insurances, right?
Yeah, it's insurance, AMC, Mick?
But maybe we should find out, but usually they have meetings. But I haven't been going, cause I haven't received any notice.
Oftentimes their meetings.
Are when we have the.
Are when we have District or, or AMC meetings, so the notices come along, they're usually before or after that. So, I'll ask Julie to double check.
I get those, yeah.
But, but we typically get those notices.
Well, I'd be willing to do it if that's what I should be doing, but I just haven't received any notice, so I didn't do anything.
Okay, we'll wait on that then.
I mean, if you're a delegate, you'd think, think you'd get something, but I get those regular publications, but you'd think, a delegate just means that you would go to a certain delegate assembly and local conditions.
And those happen during AMC.
Done it many times in other organizations, so I guess that's a question mark, do I follow up or will someone else follow up on that one?
I'll have Julie check.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd be glad to do it, I guess if that's what I should be doing.
Minnesota Power Advisory Committee, I've been on that, it deals with Taconite Harbor, we don't meet eight times a year, it's as needed and right now we have until 2020 to decide what to do with the property, so I will continue going to whatever meeting they call. Minnesota Transportation Alliance, that was what I was thinking about for you, Bobby.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. Multi-Agency Coordinator, MAC, not Mick, but MAC. So, whenever we get, was that something that was active or?
Um, I don't remember, yeah, we didn't meet about it. So, I would imagine a multi-agency coordination would be whenever there's an event that requires multi-agency coordination.
Yeah. Okay.
Agency from Association of Counties or from us or?
I'll ask Julie if she has any data on that.
Who that is, right. North Shore Collaborative.
I'm currently on that and I'm fine hanging in there with that.
Myron is alternate.
Heidi's alternate and.
Isn't the vacant, shouldn't that be Allison? Wasn't it the director before?
Yeah, the director definitely attends, I was just wondering if there was another person.
That's where the vacant is.
Yeah, Allison is the.
Allison?
Yeah. And she's a one L, Allison.
Mm-hmm. North Shore Forest Collaborative.
Commissioner Burscham, is that duplicative of the quarterly meeting? I think it is.
I, I would assume, you know, I've got this one coming up this month and I, quite frankly, haven't been able to go to two of them and one was canceled because of all the forest fires.
I'll ask, I'll ask Lisa which one.
Yeah, and, and so I really don't know. I would suspect they're different because I believe the other one involves DNR.
Yeah.
And I know that I've been getting notices, but that's, it's been a difficult ones to do. So, I'm sorry, but question mark, I would think.
Ginny, you're the primary on this, do you get notices?
No.
I know they meet because Jim Hall goes to them.
I haven't.
See? That's the Laurentian Conservation District.
He's on a few, he's retiring.
Okay, okay. All right.
Okay, so let's follow up on that one. North Shore Management Board.
I've been doing it, it's an evening meeting if Bobby, we would like to take it on. It's great, they've got one coming up in January, I'll try to.
Where's it at?
Beaver Bay. It's usually at Tedaguitch. So, that's not Beaver Bay, that's Suburbano.
It's Elgin City.
If, let me know if you can't make it, Bobby, and then we'll try to make it.
That's great.
So, I can make some meetings.
Northeastern Minnesota Home Consortium Advisory. That's where I substituted for you.
Yep, yep.
One thing.
Yeah, and I'm fine with continuing that and, and if I can't make it.
Sure, okay.
Go down the list.
All right. Northeast Minnesota Office of Job Training.
I've been going to those, I've had to miss a couple, have to be honest, just because of schedule conflicts. But I think I'll have less now because I, that's usually the Thursday before the Friday that we have ARC.
Okay.
Sometimes I just couldn't do that much travel with other things that are on my schedule.
So, we'll just leave that as is.
Yeah, I think I'll try it again, but I missed a couple.
Me with the.
Job training?
Oh. Yeah.
And Northeastern Transportation Partnership, so.
Is that the same thing as that other one?
No, it's different, yeah. Haven't done much with it, but.
You can put me on that.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Northeast Minnesota Emergency Communication Board, that's the radio. Jan?
And that's the one that Bobby is.
Yeah, I know that.
Okay, that's the one you are.
The one that sometimes meets in Duluth or headquartered in Duluth.
Okay. Northeast Waste Advisory Council.
Yes, we haven't met at all for a long time.
Is that something that Tim should look into for us or?
Yep.
And Tim's on top of it, yeah.
Meets quarterly.
Yeah, and they generally meet Duluth. And I'm fine staying on that one, but.
We'll have, Jeff will check into that?
Yeah.
Okay. Northern Counties Land Use Coordinating Board.
I'll continue and I maybe should announce at this time that there's going to be a subgroup that I've been asked to be on of this group. It involves three counties, St. Louis, Lake and Cook County, because it involves the mineral withdrawal thing regarding the Forest Service and that's, that's something that has been an issue with this group that I, I announced some information on at a previous meeting. So, I don't, I would just like, like to let you know that I think, you know, I'll continue with that, but there'll be a subgroup that I'll be serving on and maybe reporting on at times. And I, I fully realize that our, I think our constituents here and our, the nature of our land and who we serve and what we are is different than the mining communities, except for Lake, so, but I think that we should have representation there. I'll try to be somewhat of a moderate voice in that.
So, that's a Lake County and St. Louis County?
St. Louis. We have some, the Forest Service had withdrawn certain land from mineral exploration and, and, and what they did, they all thought it was this, just this mining area, but they actually designated certain land in Cook County and Lake County as well. And so, this group has thought that that, there should have been a process in which to go through with that, rather than just the Forest Service doing it. So, it's one of those procedural things and, and hasn't been political so far, so that's good. But I, I just want to update people that'll be, you know, in a subcommittee of that and be part of it.
And Jan, for alternate?
I'm sure.
Can stay on, okay. Sounds like Myron is getting into the thick of that, so, it sounds good.
It's a very active group, very active group.
North Shore Scenic Drive Council, I will continue to attend those, I don't have an alternate, but I, that's usually on a Friday, I've been able to make that.
He can be an alternate.
Okay, good, thank you. That's usually between Tedaguitch and, and whoever is open, we've come up to Grand Portage, so it's up and down the shore, thank you, Bobby. Northwest Food Project Board.
Can we look into this, cause I have not received any notice, I don't know if they're meeting.
Yeah. So, we're on board in case we do. One Watershed, One Plan Committee.
I've been on that and I'm willing to continue unless someone else wants to do it.
Okay.
This one I have conflicts with at times, so I just sort of alternate.
When do they meet?
It varies.
Okay, it varies?
That's the problem.
Oh.
You know, when you get this many committees like others, you know, then they change the date and then you have a conflict with another one. So, I just pick the truth, I say.
Yeah. And they meet different places or right here?
And I don't have an alternate on that one, so I don't know, I just haven't, I think I've gotten to all but one.
And they meet here?
Yes, I'm actually Chair of it.
Oh. Okay.
So.
Okay.
I tried to, I think I had to miss one.
All right. Parks and Trails, here's where, I've been going to those as a transfer from the other planning committee and so forth. So, I could continue if Heidi would continue to be alternate. And we were gonna bring over a couple other topics to this, you were gonna check into that.
I'll have Lisa update all of those, yep.
Yeah, okay. Personnel Committee, we're gonna work on that between other budget and, and public safety.
I'd like to stay on that committee.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it seems if you're gonna stay on budget, it's stay on personnel and.
Sure.
Makes sense, okay. Planning Commission. Looks like they will deal with the vacancy there.
They have, it's Don Fair.
Oh, Don, oh, Don is, okay.
Yeah, he's been on there for quite some time.
And then you attended.
And then that other spot where it doesn't say anything, that's Adam Treeful.
Treco?
Treeful, T-R-E-E-F-U-L.
And Heidi.
Yep.
Alrighty. Popular River Watershed, I will continue on that. We don't really meet every month and probably less as Popular River is being taken care of. Public Health and Human Services Advisory Committee.
They're meeting this afternoon, Madam Chair, and we'll get an updated list to make sure that's correct, but we should verify.
You'll get a verification on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
On that one there, I'd like to see someone from either Health Service or our Human Services from Grand Portage on that board.
Okay, that'd be great.
We get the spots. Are they willing to do that?
On, on this Human Service Advisory Committee?
Yeah.
Roger's always been a member of this.
Roger, he's not on here?
Yeah, Roger's always been a member of this, so. He was one of the first people I met, one of the first meetings I went to when I first got here, so if he's not there, then he sends somebody.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Public Safety Transportation Committee, Myron?
And Bobby has been attending that one as well.
Region Three Social Services, we all attend that whenever necessary. Revolving Loan Fund Committee.
That's fine.
I'm fine.
Okay. Safety Wellness Workplace Committee.
I'm good.
Good on there, Security Committee.
I'm fine.
Good there. Septic Advisory.
I think I'm going on that one.
You'll go on there?
Yeah.
Okay, as primary?
As primary. Ginny's alternate, I'm primary, you wanna be, so you go with me?
Okay.
Bobby and I'll be primary.
Okay.
I think I got, that's the email I got from Tim.
Okay. I can back you up on that. Septic Ordnance Committee.
Do you wanna be the alternate on that?
Yeah.
Sheriff Advisory Committee.
I've gone to that one, I think it was the only one that went, so, okay.
Continue as needed?
Yep.
Okay, I was on the Sign Ordnance Committee, but
Where's that one?
I really, I, it's on my list of things, so I.
I think we removed it.
We removed that, right, because we're done.
Cause we finished it.
We finished all that. So, I'm taking that off of there and I'm taking it there. Slash Disposal Committee.
That's after Firewise, so I'm on that one.
Firewise, okay. Solid Waste Committee. Jan, Heidi.
I'll stay on that.
Okay.
Apparently I like all things.
Okay. Veteran Service, we have Pat Strand in charge there, YMCA. Myron, Heidi and Myron.
Myron and Myron.
Myron and Myron.
Yeah, and also under this, there's a Facilities Committee and I wasn't going for a while because I had to be in Duluth in those days, but I don't know, Jeff, if that, we should add that on there as well with Facilities, or should we just include that?
I think it should just be included under the, the local representation.
Okay, fine. But it, it will involve three different meetings now, that's my point.
Oh, okay.
Per month, and that's fine.
Okay, okay. And that's in Duluth?
The one is in Duluth. I should also mention too, that I've been asked to be on Herman Town YMCA work group to try to get those to work. That's another similar situation to here, where Herman Town and Essential Health are negotiating agreements with YMCA, Duluth Area YMCA to provide a facility in Herman Town. And I will be working with that group when I can as well, I've been asked just because of the experience here.
So, that would be a meeting once a month?
I'll try to do them when I'm down there, but I just wanna add that I guess there might be another meeting involved with that as well.
Okay.
Any questions about that?
So, so Madam Chair, I just, I'm, I'm, so are you asking to add that as a meeting to our list, or are you just saying, you're just giving us information?
I think information that, that, that maybe should be noted, that it's going to involve that maybe two or three times when we negotiate the contract.
For our way?
No, for the Duluth Area Y and Herman Town.
I don't think that should be added to our list.
I don't think so either.
Okay, fine, but I just want you to know that I've been asked to be involved in that.
Be involved there.
Yeah.
But it makes sense that you would be involved.
Yes. Commissioner Sterling, on our individual list, it says Bobby's the alternate and it's actually me. And Bobby is not available at that time, so I'll be the alternate.
Continue with that.
The YMCA County Community Local Branch Board of Directors, on this sheet, it says Myron and I, and on his sheet, it says he's the alternate.
Okay, okay.
So, just make sure.
So, who's the alternate?
I am.
Okay.
Heidi is. Okay, everybody good on that?
Yep.
Vacation Rental Committee, well, we did have some discussion about that, but Tim Nelson has a list and if it comes up before the Board, then we'll deal with it then as a Board.
I'm the one on that one, I started that whole.
Yeah.
Trauma.
Okay, other committees supported by Commissioners. Explore Minnesota Council, nobody's been appointed that I know of, so we'll just leave that open. Governors Council has, those two gentlemen, I guess are still attending those meetings. And the Water Plan Advisory Committee Members has two openings. And right now, that's, will be attended to as needed. Wow.
Yep, that's the long one.
Yes.
Need to make a motion to approve those?
Make a motion to approve all of these Boards and Commissions.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then I did add on to my agenda that I also attend three monthly township meetings in the West End and, and Birch Grove as needed, so. Add that on too, but that's only for my personal stuff, not for Board stuff. Okay, so we've done number eight, going on to meeting dates for Cook County Board Commissioners. We have, we have that. We have, we have that scheduled, which is second, third, and fourth Tuesdays. However, we are looking at a little bit of a change for board meetings. Can you update us on that?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Did we want to, we had the conversation on December 19th about having our committee the whole and a public comment period. So on the third Tuesday, we would have the Health and Human Services Board meeting as regularly scheduled, and then not convene a board meeting right after that, but then convene the committee the whole in the afternoon with a public comment period. So from 4:30 or 5 o'clock. And everybody who contacted me over the course of the weekend said they were interested in trying that and seeing how we, how we went for having attendance and what kind of public reception that got.
So County Board of Commissioners will meet on the second and fourth Tuesdays.
Was that pretty much an agreement with everyone that we try it?
Yep.
I would update the, the regular board schedule to include a committee the whole on the third Tuesday at 5 P. M. And then, because if we note that in our regularly scheduled meetings, and if we hold to that, then we don't have to provide any other notice throughout the year for that. The notice that we provide at this meeting for the balance of the year is the notice of our regular meetings, unless we change it. And then, then if we change it, then we provide additional notice.
So you're proposing 5 to 6:30 or 4:30 to 6:30?
I'm asking.
Oh, okay, I'm asking.
5 o'clock is easier for people to get off of work.
Okay.
I mean, that's a long day for you.
5 to 6:30?
We would probably just schedule it to start at 5 o'clock, and we would, and we would, and it would depend.
Okay.
Our regular meetings, you know, the, the end time is kind of scheduled based on the content that we have, so we would just start at 5 o'clock. And based on the conversation that we had a couple of weeks ago, you know, we could, the format of those meetings could be the same as our committee the whole has been. We could take public comment the way we've taken public comment. Of course, you, you have the opportunity at any given meeting to schedule a, a town hall or suspend the rules just so we can have discussion. We have a lot more flexibility with that time. But I think if on the regular notice, we just notice a committee the whole with a public comment period, then people will have an idea of what to expect. And one of the objections that we meet during the day all the time and people who can't get here will provide an opportunity for them to, to attend.
Okay. And in the discussion.
Yeah, and I did make a comment to Mr. Cadwell, and, and I only mention this now as something to mull over and think about, but depending upon how that goes, you know, at some point, I, I think if we get into some real good reasonable dialogue on issues, as he mentioned, we have some more flexibility with that meeting, so maybe we can have more interaction with the public, you know. As that, I don't know, try it at first for public, you know, comment, and then, and maybe at some point in time, we will be able to address some of those things a little bit more rather than at the end of the meeting. In our comments, I guess we don't have the structure of a regular meeting.
I think we could be open to seeing how it goes with the public and topics to discuss and everything that needs to be covered along the way. We're forging a new, a new way here, so. Commissioner DuKirk?
Motion to approve 2018 meeting schedule for the Cook County Board of Commissioners to meet on the second and fourth Tuesday beginning at 8:30 A. M. And also a committee of the whole meeting the third Tuesday at 5 P. M.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. There we are. W T I P schedule for the Commissioners, we have that here. And what we've always done is if someone cannot do it, then they make arrangements for an alternate.
I'm co, I'm okay with today.
Bobby, are you interested in being added in?
So I will be on board next week. Now, do we need a break or just keep going? 9:45, look at that.
Julie's good at this.
We'll keep going. Hey, Brady, you're on.
Yeah, so next item, this is a resolution recognizing the non-county levies. And that, recognizing that we'll collect that and spread that to the various entities, taxing authorities. So this is the list of the city, the towns, the unorganized fire departments, the three special taxing districts, and the school. There compares the 2017 final levy and the 2018 final levy. So ask for approval of that resolution.
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And we approved the, the levy back in January, but we also, historically, we've approved a resolution to adopt the entire budget and the levy. And there were some adjustments of the projects in Roden Bridge, which didn't affect the levy, but Lisa and Jeff, et cetera, met and adjusted some of those projects. So this is, these are the final numbers on expenditures and revenues and the levy that you approved in December.
Motion to approve.
You have a second? A second at, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we received one proposal for official newspaper, the Cook County News Herald, and I handed out this morning their proposal form and their standard rate, which they have to give us, nine dollars per column inch for 2018. Asked for approval of that resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Any discussion?
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. So the rule is that we have to designate.
For the legal publications. You could, you could do other non-legal publications elsewhere, but most of the things that we do are are some, something in statute that says you have to send out a legal notice. T and T, for example, we, we put out a notice and sometimes we'll put out a notice for taxes are due next week or something that aren't legal, and we could do that elsewhere, but, so, but the legal ones have to, have to go here.
Right.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, typically we have to, we have to report the transactions of the business of the board in the official newspaper. That's why we have to name an official newspaper. So a place for the required public notices, the, any notice of special meeting or emergency meetings, the publication of the minutes or the summary minutes as decided by this, this board. We do a lot more business with the local newspaper because that's how we have shared that information. But we've changed the nature of that, so we, we don't, publishing job notices instead of publishing a long notice. We've published a notice that Cook County is taking applications for these positions. Please see the website for additional information. So the nature of the notices, the non-required notices, has changed a little bit, but the required notices and the required official newspaper are the ones that Brady has said.
Yeah, and some of the requirements are just, like Jeff said, you can, you can have a short notice and have additional information on your website or elsewhere, so. So we've done that to reduce the costs.
I think if we look at the, at the requirements for a qualified newspaper to be able to submit a bid, I think we, we have one option and.
Okay, that's my next question.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All righty. Does it need a county website?
Yes, so that's, it's not a resolution, just a motion to designate the website as an official publication for county business.
So moved.
A second. All in favor? Thank you.
And the last one I have is the designating a bank depository. This is a resolution also. We have a policy on this that we go out for bids every three years, asking for different rates, so. Remember, I think this is the third year for Grand Rice State Bank, so they're already, they're still under that original bid. I think we look again this year, so.
So, so moved, the resolution designating the official deposit.
Yeah.
Okay, that's second.
Work.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else, Brady?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Thank you. Then moving on to page that I don't have.
Oh, sure. Agenda one?
Yeah. So we'll move on to Jeff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Northeast Appointment Request Area Transportation Partnership. We just made that, so I will submit a notice of this to Russell Haberman, Northeast Area Transportation Partnership. We just appointed Commissioner DeShaw and a vacant highway engineer as our representatives on that in our Commissioners list. So I will just provide him with the updated information that he has there. And then item 12 B, the AMC Legislative Committee's priorities. I, I think what we ought to do is, is the, is the first page here is a summary of the action that we, that we've, the conversations that we've had as a board and as District One, and adopt this short form as Cook County's legislative priorities for 2018. And then attached to that, you can see that last week we got the full Minnesota Counties legislative priorities. So I, I believe that this is representative of the notes that we had at our committee the whole and the notes that you brought back from the District One meeting. So if that's correct, then I think we would just by motion adopt this summary.
Okay, I hear a motion to do that, so moved. Second? Any discussion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. So do we have any employee concerns, Commissioner concerns?
What's our status with the highway engineer?
Commissioner Severson and I have a meeting in Lake County tomorrow to discuss that, so hopefully I'll have an update for our Highway Advisory Committee on Thursday morning.
Any Commissioner reports?
Happy New Year.
Meetings to note or meeting updates? W T I P interview. Commissioner Bershine?
Yes.
Okay. Severe weather memo. What would we say about that, other than Valerie's been doing a good job and updating on her website about the cold weather and how to be careful about that? And the, the little 5 K was postponed or not done out in the weather, but we could support the cause at the church. Organizational schedule? We did that? Do you have anything to add to it, or the Commissioner list? So we do have some announcements for our January Employee Service. Ms. DuKirk likes to do that.
All right, here we go, kids. Adam Nelson, two years in our Highway Department. He actually works in the office. He does get out in the field, but he's behind the scenes. You might not see him very often. And then we have Mitchell Travis in our Land Services. He took over for David Demmer, so thank you very much for your first year of service. John Groth at Law Enforcement Center, four years. Holly Schroder, again, as I said, last year she started when she was 12, so she's got 19 years in our Recorder's Office. Martina Williams, 11 years in Public Health. Leah Ekstrom, three years in the Attorney's Office. Nanette Aaron, seven years. For those who don't know, she started with us over in the Sheriff's Office and moved over to our Highway Office, so seven years with the county. And then Brian Silas, 18 years in maintenance, and yes, he also started when he was 12. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, for sure. Any other business? I will make a motion to adjourn our first meeting of 2018. Thank you all.
Aye.